This program is made possible by Chesapeake Energy, PNC, Highmark, the Forbes Funds, and UPMC. Thank you.
What we really need to focus on is competing as a region against other regions.
Regional goals and strategies in six key areas: transportation and infrastructure, people and communities, the economy, government, the environment, and education. WQED presents 32 Counties, One Vision: The Power of Regional Thinking. Now your host, Tonya Caruso.
Good evening and welcome. For weeks now, we have been talking about the power of 32. And tonight, you will hear from the people who have developed the goals and strategies to make the 32 counties in western Pennsylvania, eastern Ohio, northern West Virginia, and western Maryland a singular stronger region. Organizers, many of whom are here tonight, first led community meetings in every county involved in the project. And based on those discussions, they went to work, coming up with concrete goals and strategies in six key areas. And we will start with the first three: transportation and infrastructure, people and communities, the economy. And our panel for the first half of this hour-long town hall meeting, let me introduce them to you now. First off, we have Selena Schmidt. She is the Executive Director of the Power of 32. Welcome. We're so glad that you're here. We have Rick Stafford, who is not only a farmer from Somerset County, he's also the Director of Traffic 21 at Carnegie Mellon University. Thank you for joining us. We also have on our panel tonight Melanie Harrington. She is the CEO of Vibrant Pittsburgh. And finally, we have Scott Rotruck. He is the Vice President of Corporate Development and State Government Relations for Chesapeake Energy. Welcome to all of you tonight. We're so happy that you're here with us. And before we get started and we get forth with our conversation, we want to head over to Michael Bartley. He's here tonight to tell us there are two ways that viewers can participate. Michael's in the audience to explain.
Tonya, thank you. I'm here for the fun part. If you can text, you can take part. Here's what we want to know. Which of these six, which of these six areas would you volunteer to work on? Okay, if it's transportation, text the number 2, transport 2, 22333. If it is government, text the number to GOV, to the same number. If it is people and communities, text to people. If it's education, text to EDU, as in education. If it's environment, text to ENV. And if it's economy, text to ECON, E-C-O-N. We also want to know which of these six areas do you think will most benefit from working as a region? Simply text the number 3 in front of your chosen word. And our last question, which of these six areas impacts you the most? Just text the number 4 in front of your chosen word, and we will have the results for you a little later on in the program. You can also be part of the conversation by checking out our Twitter page tonight. I'm not a big Twitter guy, but I sort of learned in a hurry this afternoon. Just follow WQED on Twitter and tag your tweets with hashtag #P32. Tag your tweets, Tone. I'm getting it.
Very good. We're glad. You said that's the fun part, but I actually think this is the fun part. We have a fun panel, and really, an important panel with some great things to say. And Selena, let's begin with you, because people sitting at home, when they first hear the Power of 32, we always joke, what is that, the Franco-Harris Fan Club? Let's tell folks about why you felt this was so important, and how this came about, and really, who came to the table for this.
Well, we're communities that have more in common with each other in many ways than we do with the rest of our states. Our geography is consistent, our history, our economy is intimately linked. Almost 20% of the workforce crosses the state line to work every day in this area. But we don't aggregate, and we don't work together that way. We let those invisible lines be barriers for us. And what we really wanted to do with this project is bring everyone to the table, find out what the common areas of interest were, so we could leverage our collective power. So that 4 million people, we can be 4 million people strong instead of small segments. And we've brought together not just the community, but also every single sector, the nonprofit, the public sector, the government, and also our private companies, all coming together to problem solve together, to find out how we can be better as a region, better collectively than we can ever be by ourselves.
Right. So what do you want to say to someone sitting there at home who's saying, "So, in the end, what does that mean? Why is bigger better in this case?"
Well, if you think about sitting at home, or you're in Wheeling, and I know we've got some folks that are watching out there tonight at a Twitter party. If you're a community that's only 40,000 strong, and you've got infrastructure problems, and you're trying to figure out how to work with your workforce, it's hard to pull together all the resources to make that happen. But if you think about a region that has eight US senators, 10 members of Congress, an economy of $180 billion before this new explosion with energy, it's really something where we can start talking about competing against the world, instead of competing across little segments of little states.
Okay. All right, so on our portion of the panel right now, we're going to talk about transportation, community and peoples, and of course, the economy. So, we'll start with whole transportation. So you're a farmer in Somerset County, but you work at CMU. And give me just a brief idea first of Traffic 21, what exactly that is.
Well, Traffic 21 is about technology applied to the transportation system in a variety of ways that make that system safer and more efficient. And when, as a transportation effort in Power of 32, one of the things that we really focused on was the need to connect our region with information. How do you get from Greensburg to Youngstown? And there are ways to do that, besides just a car. And we need to be able to use technology, a gizmo like this, my prop, to help enhance the ability of citizens to know how the best way to go, and do so in real time. So one of our initiatives that really spilled out of the Power of 32 conversation is how do we create a traveler information system that is based not only by smartphones, but hardline phones, and can be accessed by everybody, to make those arteries that are our transportation system work more efficiently?
Now, are you in charge of transportation because you drive every day from Somerset to CMU?
Well, actually, sometimes in our farm trucks. So, the real reason transportation is important is how do we get that truck to all those giant eagles from the farm?
All right, very good. And so, when you're talking about technology and using technology, what are we missing now? Why was this an area of focus? I would think instantly, you would think, our bridges are falling apart, we can't pave our roads. Why were these areas of focus?
Well, technology and its ability to help us be smarter, whether it's traffic lights, knowing where parking spaces are, knowing the fastest way to get around congestion, we can help the system be more efficient. And in the face of the kinds of constraints on funding that we have at the federal and even the state level, that becomes all the more important. And in fact, technology can contribute to how we maintain our roadways as well, by just simply identifying where all the potholes are, and prioritizing what potholes need to be fixed, and so on. So there are lots of opportunities for technology, again, to make our system safer and more efficient in the face of not being able to fix up everything we want to do.
Right. What about, too, the pool of the universities throughout this 32-county region, and new technologies that they may be working on? How does that play into this whole transportation and infrastructure?
Well, it's huge. The fact is that I think one of the biggest assets that we share across our 32 counties is in this somewhat self-serving, given that I'm in higher education, but are our higher education institutions and the ability not only to do research and development, but partner with our communities to deploy that, and also educate the workforce of tomorrow, makes the entire region more competitive.
Yeah. And so, talking about transportation, that's kind of a nice lead-in to the trails. And I spent some time in West Newton recently, the Great Allegheny Passage. And talk to me about, you're on this committee of people and communities. Where did you come up with what the goals should be? And what do you say to folks that your number-one priority is?
Well, let me piggyback on something that Rick said. One of the assets of the region are its people. And the people in this region are so connected to their communities. We have a proud multicultural history. And we used to be one of the more diverse regions in the country. And we have an amazing story of rising from the ashes, recovering from a really challenging recession during the 70s and 80s. And now, we have this great story. There are amenities, people have worked on the environment, there are job opportunities, there are the wonderful educational institutions. And now, it's the opportunity to connect the people throughout the region to some of these amenities, and bring some visitors to our region to explore what we have to offer. Out of those conversations, we said, "Let's build on something we have, the trails being something that we have." And so, we built on that idea. Out came the idea of connecting the trails. And I'd like to hand off to Dave Kaylee with the Progress Fund, because we have a champion in the Progress Fund to move this forward. And so, if, Dave, if you can...
Chomping at the bit right here. Okay, Dave.
Well, hi. The trail that we have with the Great Allegheny Passage has been a phenomenal gift by the trail builders that have been working on it for 20 years. They've built not only a recreational and health activity for us, but they've also given us 141-mile economic development tool. So what the Progress Fund has been doing is lending to small businesses along that trail, in those communities. And we're making, we're doing well, we're making money. Those businesses in this last year have created over $40 million in sales, and that's just the beginning. 800,000 people are riding that trail. What the region really did is understood that. They saw this potential benefit, and have asked the Power 32 to think about a regional trail network. Philadelphia is now working on a 500-mile regional network. We have our Great Allegheny Passage, but there's a lot more room for more trails.
The trails, it's probably the most symbolic of connectivity in this regionalism deal.
You can go down there this weekend, and you can ride it, you can enjoy it. It's very tangible, and it makes sense. It's simple and really usable asset. So, when you get on that trail, though, what you like to do is not only ride it, but you afterwards like to kind of celebrate it. So, a restaurant, a coffee shop, maybe stay overnight at a hotel, that kind of stuff is economic opportunity. So that's what we've been lending to. And we think that more trails are going to be an attraction for the region, and also give the region an opportunity to be healthier economically.
No boundaries with these trails?
No.
And that's really symbolic of regionalism.
Probably the most concrete example that you can give so far. All right, I want to get to Mr. Economy down here, because in this day and age, everybody's talking about the economy, talking about jobs. First off, why was this something that you wanted to be involved in?
Because I've always thought about living in a region. I think that we need to think regionally. That's the proper scope about how we address problems, how we solve problems, how we meet those challenges. I think we need to think regionally, we need to pursue excellence locally, and then we need to collaborate in order to be able to compete globally. I'm an old railroader. I spent 10 years in the railroad industry. And the image that just was brought about is exactly right, connecting people. That's where the power is. James Kerewacki from The New Yorker wrote a book called The Wisdom of Crowds. And then he talked about diversity of perspective. When you get more and more folks together, and they bring their ideas together, in that melting pot of ideas, you get elegant solutions to problems.
Okay, so you know everyone at home is like, "Where is this man from?" So tell folks about where you live. And we were joking...
Morgantown, West Virginia, where, quite frankly, the Rails-to-Trails Project there literally changed the town. It helped redevelop the town. We thought about ourselves in a new way with the Rails-to-Trails Project in Morgantown.
Okay, so so much going on. You sit down at the table. What are the goals that the Economy Committee has come up with? And, you know, what do you say, like, why are these the goals that we're facing?
Well, one first goal is a fund of funds. We have wonderful ideas, we have great talent. We've talked about the amount of higher ed infrastructure we have in this region, which is tremendous. We need to fund these ideas. And a fund of funds would be an effort to get a critical enough amount of money together that could be determined on how to be deployed by a committee, which would be very diverse. We'd have economic development professionals on it, we'd have venture capital folks on it, we'd have angel investors on it. And we would invest in those things that have the best chance of making a difference in this region. Some would be high-tech startups, we hope would grow large and fast. Others would be niches, businesses that would fit in well in the economy we already have existing.
And so, as you're doing this, and part two, you're also kind of taking a scope of the entire region and trying to figure out where are the best places to attract companies? I guess, so where are we now, on a scale of 1 to 10, as a region, economy-wise and growth-wise?
Well, we weathered, this region weathered the downturn in the economy pretty well because of our diversity. And as was talked about earlier, this city that we're in tonight has made some great transitions, from steel to financial services, to now a very robust healthcare economy. But the diversity is what has allowed it to weather it. We have a fund that will be established in order to look at site development, and we need to pick the best sites in the region, put money towards them to optimize them, so that they are shovel-ready when people have an idea that they want to locate there.
Why is that so important, that they're shovel-ready?
If not, that project will go somewhere else. And we want it to locate here. That is one of the first things that a location company that is helping a business decide where to go looks for, are they ready?
Is it realistic to think, there's so much competition, even when Westinghouse was leaving Monroeville and going to Cranberry. Is it realistic to think that every county will be on board with this? And how do you make sure that that's all done fairly and equitable?
By being as inclusive as possible in the process. And this process has been inclusive. It's not just ask people to come in. This process has taken it to the folks. We've gone out across the region, we've tried to get as broad a participation as we possibly can. I think that's been very successful. I think it is evidenced here tonight.
Yeah. And where are you on the timeline? These goals are, you know, developed, and how long before you find a fund manager, you create a fund of funds, and begin to raise the money?
Well, as quickly as possible. But there will be an implementation team put in place, which will be chaired by President Clements from Western Virginia University. So we think this will move along rather briskly. This is not an organization that was set up to last. This was a project and an action plan. And I think you will see it move quite quickly, under his guidance.
Yeah. And Selena, I guess I should ask you, so we're beginning this, we're talking about all of these significant but lofty goals. What is the general timeframe? And what do you hope by the end of this that we will achieve?
Well, Tonya, these are really first steps. And we do have everybody at the table. And just as you watch tonight, you'll see a lot of that, we'll see nonprofit, we'll see private sector, we'll see public. But we also see the entire region coming together. And that was really critical. It does take time to put people together. These 14 projects that we launched today, some have already started and begun. When you talk to the folks about education, you talk about the trails, have already had initial meetings. But some of them will take a little bit longer. Our outlook for this project was always 2025. And all the things that were discussed at community conversations aren't represented in these 14 goals, but these are, again, those first steps. It takes a long time to change behavior. You talk about competition. And the Site Preparation Fund is a great example of why we really need people to come together and start changing that behavior. If we can get these 14 under our belt first, and an amazing array of projects to think that we've done in just under two years, imagine what we'll be able to do once we get used to working together.
Yeah. So, I want to get back to infrastructure and traveling for a while. And how do we stack up when it comes to how easy or not so easy it is to get around compared to other areas? And what sort of improvements do we need, not only for citizens, but to attract businesses here as well?
Sure. Well, we have some big challenges, Tonya. The fact is, our very attractive geography and our wonderful rivers and our mountains make transportation very challenging. And in fact, back to Scott and his railroad days, one of the things we have to look at is bringing rail and water back. They were instrumental in the way this 32-county region grew, and sort of fell a little bit in disrepair as we transitioned to the auto. And I think that, and one of the action steps, actually, that we want to undertake, is seriously looking at freight and how it moves, and how we can utilize our rail and water assets and build them up, hopefully with that congressional delegation that was pointed out by Selena. So if we can get our effort together and resurrect that, we can move more freight off the highways, relieve some of the congestion there. But we've got huge challenges in transportation without a question. And one of the things that we really have to emphasize is the ability to turn to new fuels as well. The idea of natural gas, the idea of electric vehicles gives us a double whammy, because not only are those environmentally more attractive, but they are also technologically based, and we can push forward on that. So, we're going to put quite an effort, I think. The Power of 32 is going to get behind electric and natural gas-fired vehicles as a way to power our future. And by the way, in tugboats as well as cars.
There you go. Well, so if there's such a long list of things that could be done, what would you say is the top priority, if you're looking at transportation and infrastructure? Where do you start?
Well, that's really a question. I'll be totally self-serving, because I think one of the things, just like the trails have been something that Dave pointed out have defined us, I think that if we can build a traveler information system, that's a very doable thing with technology, so that we identify ourselves as 32 counties, because that information is available about how to use the system now more effectively. So, that's the one I'm supposed to deal with, by the way. So, but I do think it's the immediate thing to deal with.
Yeah. Melanie, I just want to ask you, when this all came about, did at first you say, "This is really lofty, and this will never happen"?
Well, I didn't say this will never happen. I have to admit, I thought it was bold and lofty. But actually, I recently relocated to Pittsburgh from Atlanta, Georgia, a little more than a year ago, for a lofty, bold effort as a part of Vibrant Pittsburgh to grow the diversity of this region's workforce. And so, I definitely wanted to connect with something else that had a similar sort of bold effort to connect people in the region, its assets, amenities. It seemed like everything was moving in the right direction for this area. So, I saw great things and wanted to be a part of it.
Scott, how about you? And do you see this as something that can be done, that these concrete goals can be accomplished?
Well, I think, as Selena already said, some of them are already well along the way to being accomplished. Just to make mention of another book I'd recommend to folks, Innovation in Missing Dimension by Richard Lester from MIT, is a professor who spent a lot of time down in this region. And he admonished us not to turn our backs on energy, but to think about it in new ways, to use it in new ways. And we have the capacity here with a National Energy Technology Lab in this region, with five universities in partnership to look how we can optimize that. Another wonderful thing, in terms of talking about money to fund the new ideas, John Serman has observed, the Chairman of US Steel, that the Marcellus may be the greatest wealth builder that we've seen in this region. One of the beauties is in this country, unlike most any other country in the world, you can own your own minerals. A lot of that money will stay here. And we can capture that money to build new successive rounds of economic development, beyond just the stimulus of the immediate energy development. It's good news.
Very good. And so, as you're sitting here with the panel, again, what do you want to say to the people at home about why this really is something that they should care about, and come to the table, and volunteer, and be a player in?
Well, it started with the people at home. Those conversations that we had, and many of our facilitators and outreach coordinators are here tonight, and I'm so glad to see you. We started with clerks and CEOs, farmers and grandmas, I mean, literally ranging from 12 to 93 in age. We wanted every single person to come to the table, because their life experience matters in problem-solving as well. So when we take a look at these ideas that are coming forward now, these are really answers to the challenges that they gave us in those community conversations. These are the first round of answers, the first steps. Once we can accomplish these, the other things on the list can happen so much easier.
Very good. Let's go over to Michael right now. He has a guest with him there.
Okay, thanks so much. John Turack from Westmoreland County, Penn State Extension. Is that right? You have a question for the panel?
Yes, we've been talking a lot tonight. We have transportation and infrastructure, people and communities, business and economy. I was one of the community conversation coordinators, and it came up often, over and over again, you know, connecting the 32 counties and connecting our neighborhoods, our communities. I'm curious, the issue teams, how, if the panelists have thoughts on how the various issue teams can work together and make connections on the goals, you know, to advance the region, if anybody has any thoughts.
Good question.
Anyone? Anyone?
Well, I'll start, and you guys can jump in. One of the things that we did is we made sure that each of the issue areas had experts from across the geography. And actually, in that transportation and infrastructure meeting, there was a point where three different universities realized they were working on different parts of the problem, and I almost couldn't get them to leave because they were talking to each other. So that was one piece. But we also recognized that a lot of these ideas do cross the different issue arenas. So we set up one meeting that would do very much like Scott was talking about, bringing the crowd together. And from that, we came up with a number of good ideas and crossover issues. Scott mentioned talking about the wealth that's created here in the region. Well, when folks have got those checks that they haven't seen before, wouldn't it be great if they could invest in a fund that goes right back into the region? That's a really important piece of talking about how do we deal with our, what do we have, what advantages for our rural communities, for our urban communities, our suburban communities, all can come together. Trails and community were very important, talking about the diversity of the region, but also going back to the economy, to education, a lot of the challenges that we have as we're trying to cross over this geography. So bringing those teams together, I think, made a huge difference in narrowing these 14 projects and making them actionable to happen, so they can happen right now.
Right. I was just sitting here wondering, how long did it take to do all of those community meetings?
Each community session was two and a half hours. And we actually did them all between June and November. So, 156 sessions that we did.
Yeah. And what about panel members? How often do your committees meet, or did they meet coming up with this? You all put a bunch of time into this.
Oh, yeah, telephone, email, evenings, mornings, in-person. But it was a good learning experience, I think, for each of us that participated in our committees and teams, learned more about the region than we thought we knew, or that we had expected to. So, it was also an individual learning experience, I think, for us.
Very good. Okay, well, let's take a quick look at the results of our surveys, and for that, we go back to Michael Bartley.
Okay, we have some results in so far. Of the six areas, once again, don't forget the question, which would you volunteer to work on? Education is getting the most support. Education, no big surprise there, I don't think, but we'll hear from the panel on that. Okay. We also want to know, which of these six areas do you think will benefit from working as a region? So far, the economy getting the most votes, the economy. Okay, now, our last question was, which of these six areas impacts you the most? No surprise here, I don't think, the economy getting the most votes. Okay, don't forget, text KEYWORD, 22333. Okay, those are the results so far. Now, what are people saying on Twitter? I'm going to take a little look over my shoulder here. I think we're going to go full screen here. Okay. Twitter tonight, "We aren't used to thinking of ourselves as a unified region. How do we get past the parochialism"? Very, now that's what you call a tweet. Am I right? Huh? Am I right over there? That's a major tweet. That's, take it. That's the question of the day.
Yeah, we have about 30 seconds left. Who can tackle that in 30 seconds?
I lived the transition. I was born in Waynesburg in Green County, and to me, that was the region. And moved to Pittsburgh and discovered, wow, it's a little bigger. And today, through the Power 32, I've realized that it's even bigger. And my sense is, over that lifespan, that more and more people are realizing that the real competition is the rest of the world, not the other high school or the other town.
Scott, you said something really funny to me out in the hallway before we got started. Can you share that with everyone, about the city of Pittsburgh, regionalism?
Oh, I made the observation that Pittsburgh was the largest city in West Virginia.
I have to tell you, my spouse went to WVU, and Jim Clements has a big job ahead of him to make all this happen.
Very good. Mel, would you like to add anything?
No, I think as we expand our worldview, and perhaps put ourselves in some uncomfortable situations as a way of becoming more comfortable with the direction that we're going in, it 'll all work out just fine.
Okay, well, we thank you so much for spending some time with us tonight. We spent the first half hour talking about transportation and infrastructure, people and communities, and the economy. We're now going to switch gears in a second, and switch to our second set of goals and strategies. The first area is government.
The state line used to be for us like the Berlin Wall. Oh, God, those people in Ohio, they root for the Buckeyes, and we're rooting for Pitt and Penn State.
The value of building regional partnerships. The Power 32 is working to convince everyone that it makes sense to work together.
It grows our region and zone of influence, I think. When you cross boundaries with that many states, you start talking about congressional representation, senatorial representation.
Regional thinking can also help protect and improve the environment. While we enjoy our scenic hills and valleys and rivers in four states, this region still has one of the worst air pollution problems in the country.
But for us to take the next step is really about all of us. It's not about any one facility, but it's about all of us coming together. So, I think it's very, very possible for us to have much, much better air. Today is only a beginning. And I think it's up to all of us to get involved, all of us to figure out ways that we can make a difference.
Business leaders, environmental groups, and those affected by dirty air are coming together to clean the air we breathe.
The Breathe Project is just what Pittsburgh needs to bring everyone from each sector of the community into a unified force to create the change we need in our air quality.
And finally, improving education.
There's such a disparity in funding for public education.
And it puts thousands of students at a disadvantage. The Power 32 has two major goals and strategies to improve every student's odds.
Okay, so now to our second set of panelists. We begin with Jay Williams. He is the former mayor of Youngstown, Ohio, and currently works in the Obama administration. Thank you so much for joining us. Karen Glatfelti, I always mess up her name, is the Environment Program Director of the Heinz Endowments, and welcome, and we thank you. And Jim DeNova, Jimmy D, is Vice President for the Claude Worthington Benedum Foundation, and thank you for joining us as well. So, Jay, we will start with you because you really went from being a mayor in a small town, and now you work on the federal level. And let's talk about that transition and why, as mayor, you thought it was important to get involved in this project.
Sure. First, I'd like to say that the political and the economic environment in which we find ourselves operating and living in is dictating that we have a change of thinking as it relates to governance and a change of acting as it relates to governance. And I've seen that certainly at the local level as the mayor of the city of Youngstown, and I've seen that in my current administration, in my current position with the administration at the federal level, which speaks to two specific issues, or the action items of the Power of 32 as it relates to governance. First of all, the establishment, as it's been talked about, of a federal caucus of Power of 32 members, both in the state and the Senate. Hopefully, that also then trickles down to the governors of the four states and then to local elected officials. The reason is that the days of Senator Byrd did an extraordinary job in bringing resources and attention to the state of West Virginia. It's a wonderful state, but that era is long gone. There will never be a time in the foreseeable future where one individual will wield that much economic power or political power to bring resources very needed and necessary to any particular state or any particular region. We've also seen that at the state level and at the local level. So, the formation of a caucus will allow the region to gain attention in Washington, DC, and more importantly, will allow the region to allow resources to be directed here because it will cross political boundaries, it will cross, hopefully in certain regard, ideological boundaries that for so long have caused gridlock. The second action item is forming a best practices bank. I always often said as the mayor of Youngstown, I was not above stealing a good idea from a neighboring community or a community across the country, whether it was our friends in Newcastle, our friends in West Virginia. But we also understood the importance of sharing lessons that we learned in Youngstown, Ohio, with other communities. That also translates to the federal level because as we work through communities, working communities across the country, there are communities that might not ever relate to one another because geographically they've been dispersed. But as you go into those communities, you find lessons that can be shared, you find obstacles that can be overcome. So, having seen it for a decade on a local level, now working on a federal level, I can't speak highly enough about this notion of forming that regional collaboration.
Right. Folks at home are probably wondering, what do you do in the Obama administration?
Sure. I'm the Director of the Office of Recovery for Auto Communities and Workers. And basically, we are assigned to work with communities across this country that have been adversely impacted by the restructuring of the auto industry. And fortunately, we're seeing a recovery of the industry as a result of the actions of the administration. But the communities themselves are still reeling. They're still trying to redefine themselves, much like Youngstown is still redefining itself from the loss of steel like we've seen here in Pittsburgh. It's done a wonderful job. Cities like Detroit and Flint and Cleveland and Dayton, we are assigned, and I specifically am assigned, to go in and help direct not only federal resource, but resources on the ground, the education institutions of higher learning, the philanthropic community, the nonprofit community, to really start thinking differently about those relationships and how those relationships can help drive the redefinition of those communities.
Thank you. We'll come back and talk more about governance in a minute. I want to get to Karen. We watched Michael's piece at 7:30 that talked about the environment and the quality of the air. And I guess if there's really one thing that has no boundaries, it's the air. So, how difficult was this to begin with, to bring players from four states to the table? And what would you say you now have outlined as your goals?
It's interesting. I would not have thought air quality would be one of the issues that would be shared among all four states because we have different regulatory regimes, we have different political environments, and sometimes we compete with each other economically, and we use environmental controls as, you know, the bad guy, the thing getting in the way of jobs. And so, it was wonderful to see that there was a shared view that clean air is a part of our future. We really need to be paying attention to improving our air for the health of all our residents today and to give us the competitive advantage that we need to attract new business, new workers for the future. The goals are really to take a regional approach to clean air. We started at the... I worked for the Heinz Endowments, and we were the initiators of the Breathe Project, which you covered earlier in this program. Our goal was, at the Heinz Endowments, to bring together a coalition broad-based throughout the 10 counties of southwestern Pennsylvania to talk about the importance of clean air and to think about what the solutions might be going forward. The goal now is for that coalition to take over and broaden its geographic view to encompass all 32 counties and really expand the conversation that we began to a broader geographic focus.
That is such a massive undertaking. Do you think that it can be achieved?
I do. I really do. We've already started with an analysis of the various air quality management programs in the states and localities of the 32 counties of Power of 32. And there are some differences, obviously, but there are many, many similarities. And just the interest in figuring out how we work together on these issues ought to get us very far. I wouldn't have thought we could get as much engagement in a 10-county southwestern Pennsylvania clean air initiative, and yet, our coalition is really energized across business, government, the nonprofit sector, religious and educational groups, to really focus on the importance of healthy air for our future.
So, businesses are on board with this as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. And the reason is, our message is, we all are contributors to dirty air. We all drive cars more than we should. We all use energy in our homes. We all make consumer purchases. We all contribute in one way or another. So, it's not just about pointing fingers at particular industrial facilities or particular power plants or particular sources of pollution. We have to think about all of those sources, and we have to think about what the solution set is across all those sources. And everyone has something to contribute. And I think that's the overall message of Power of 32 also. No matter what the issue is, we all have something to contribute. And I think that's a very powerful message for the future.
Right. Okay, so Jim, I saw you go yes when Michael said that education was polling as the first thing that people think they can get involved in. So, does that mean your job was easier than everybody else up here on this panel?
It's not easier. I'm just true to my school. So, we like to see our committee being so popular. But I guess I want to say, you asked earlier about the interface of the various committees. And for the education committee, one of the strongest recurring themes in the community conversations had to do with workforce preparation and where are the economic opportunities. And those economic opportunities are regional. The growth industries hire across state lines. Selena mentioned at the beginning of the show, 20% of the workforce crosses a state line to go to work. When you drive down through Washington County, you see corporate headquarters that really hire from as far as people will commute to work. And in fact, when our education committee first met, Nick Deulis, President of Consol Energy, held up the Power 32 map and said, "Oh, by the way, this is my hiring zone." So, that led our committee to say, "Are we preparing students for those job opportunities consistently across the region?" And it really became a compelling cause for us to look at the standardization of what career schools and community colleges are offering. Are they aligned with what industry requires? And not just the jobs that are in Wheeling or Weirton or in Garrett County, but really in the region. Because those companies are hiring from a two-hour commuting zone, and we had to get all of the schools on board.
And so, as you look at things now, where do we stack up in terms of assessment of where we are and how we are preparing people for the jobs of this new economy?
Well, there was a great impetus that started really with Marcellus Shale. And there was a federal grant that was provided to a consortium, an interstate consortium of community colleges and workforce investment boards. And that federal investment really called people together to create a permanent structure of educators and workforce funders across all four states. And that group is intact. And we felt that it was important to take an existing consortium and take it to the next level. So, there's a group, the Greater Pittsburgh Energy Alliance, which is really composed of 75 companies from several states that are looking at other energy opportunities and what schools need to do. And they're studying what the demands are and what skills are required. But because of the Marcellus Shale Group, and it's called ShaleNet, it's already in place. So, there is momentum and community colleges and workforce investment boards working across state lines already. So, I think we're at a distinct advantage because of that first step through the energy opportunities to take it to the next growth industries, whether it's healthcare, manufacturing. I think we have a step up in our region.
Is there a timeline that you're following, at least in the back of your mind, of where you would like to be with things?
Yeah, we already started. Fortunately, the Energy Alliance, which is really a joint venture of the Allegheny Conference and Innovation Works, is starting to do a workforce analysis of the region. Where are the jobs? What are the skills required? And how can we make sure that all of the schools in the region start with these data to try to design curriculum? So, I would say by the end of the year, we hope to see new course offerings, coordinated hiring opportunities across the region without regard to school district, municipality, or state lines.
Okay. And so, and actually, in our 7:30 program leading up to this, we were talking a lot about the kind of the five-county region that they work in, in Lawrence County. And then that leads us right over to Michael Bartley right now, who is standing with Commissioner Steve Craig.
Steve Craig is right here. We love the diversity of regionalism here represented tonight. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, our open regional alliance is that five-county region. And the amazing thing is that it took this long to get us all together. Youngstown, Ohio, downtown Youngstown and downtown Newcastle is a 15-mile drive. If you drive it really fast, Mayor, I can be there in 15 minutes if I catch the right number of red lights. So, there's a natural synergy that we always should have had, and now we're realizing that. The job markets in Youngstown are our job markets. The job markets in Newcastle are their job markets. Whether you're in Trumbull or Mahoning or Columbiana County or Lawrence or Mercer, we're one market. And we're doing now training together. We're doing something called Work Keys. We're preparing our workforce so that they are prepared for these jobs in the new economy, and the employers know that they're ready to go to work.
But Steve, do you have some, you must have some resistance from municipality, municipality within a county, beyond a county line, people saying, "What are you talking about"?
You know, you would have thought so, but when you put professionals in a room together and there's tremendous talent in that five-county region, it was a natural. The only thing that we had to teach the folks in Youngstown, quite honestly, is that we like to meet around...
Get off Youngstown, he's over there saying...
I know. That we like to meet around lunch. They would always have these meetings at 2:30 in the afternoon. We're going, "What are you doing? We meet in Pennsylvania over a meal."
That's right.
And once we got that together, everything started to click.
Meatloaf, mashed potatoes, everybody's friends.
Steak salad and wedding soup.
That's right. Absolutely. Stuffed cabbages, everyone's friends.
That's exactly right.
But the average person, they know what you're talking about, regionalism? The average voter, you're a politician, do they say, do they understand this?
They're learning. They're learning. I'll tell you who knows about it. Who knows about it is the job seeker. When you give that person an opportunity that now has training and said, "Listen, we're going to give you opportunities, not just in Lawrence County, because we're a small community, but you've got that same opportunity in Mercer County, Trumbull County, Mahoning County, Columbiana County, and it's 20 minutes away."
Right.
That resonates with them, and they say, "I'm going to take my skills and my knowledge and my education and my training. I can go anywhere in this region, and I have opportunities." That's what we're looking for.
And I can tell you this, right here, right now, and this is important, I've been to some very good lunches in Youngstown, no question about that, for some good places.
Very good. All right, so bouncing off of that, how tough of a sell is this? I mean, the people in this room have been people involved in the project, some community people, they know about this. How tough of a sell in the general public is this to get this message across?
Well, I think there are probably people in this room that initially were pretty skeptical too. But what Steve said is really right. The people in this region already understand this. They drive down to WVU for a game. They go to Cumberland to go mountain biking. I mean, this is not unusual. I have good friends who travel up to Altoona for the same Bluegrass Festival every single year. They already live this way. And if you think about, I've got some friends here from Steubenville, Ohio, it sounds so far away because it's two states from the city of Pittsburgh, but it's actually closer to downtown Pittsburgh than Greensburg. And we talk about Greensburg in our economic modeling all the time. You say that much, and people are like, "Oh, I guess it doesn't make any sense, does it?" And then the conversation is on.
Another question is, that I often pose to people, is consider the alternative. Are you satisfied with the current state of affairs? Are you satisfied with this notion of continuing to exist in these silos? And each of the communities can make arguments as to their quality of life and the things that they offer, but the world has changed. I mean, not only has this country changed, but the world has changed in terms of how we have to compete. So, while there are no guarantees that everyone is going to be sold on the idea, there are always going to be those people who are protectors of the status quo. When you really begin to consider the alternative, I think this becomes even that much more appealing. And she's absolutely right. In our everyday lives, whether it's in our recreation or economic decisions, we're crossing those lines. So, to make it more formalized in a setting like this, I think is only natural.
Yeah, that makes sense. Let's go back over to Michael. He has another guest with him.
Yeah, Court Gold from Sustainable Pittsburgh is here. Court, go ahead.
I really love how the panel's been talking about issues that obviously don't know political boundaries, they don't know geographic boundaries, but yet they speak to us all. And earlier was the tweeted question about parochialism. If parochialism is about pride and passion and commitment to one's local community, it's the jumping off point for thinking locally but acting regionally. Many of the issues that we're talking about tonight are very interrelated and joined at the hip. Economy, social equity, and environment. Yes, Michael?
Well, I was just going to say, just to jump off on that, Karen, you mentioned this. When I went to West Virginia, the University of West Virginia, to do the air quality piece, I thought, "Oh, are they going to know what I'm talking about, blah, blah, blah?" And Selena, hats off to you. Power of 32, you've done some unbelievable work. There's no question about that. They knew exactly what I was talking about in terms of regional cooperation on these issues.
Well, we take an issue like air quality. It's an imperative that we up our regional collaboration. Parts of our region are already designated in non-attainment by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, which brings real restrictions and barriers to the type of new development that we can attract. Air quality is shared throughout the region. It's one air, and it really requires and demands regional approaches. By the same token, we think about water and both the responsibility that we have to ourselves here in the headwaters of this massive Ohio River watershed, but also the profound responsibility to the hundreds and thousands of Americans that live downstream from us. And the Power of 32 is committed to working across the region to address both our old industrial legacy water challenges that continue to haunt us, as well as new contemporary issues, and to think about interregional mechanisms and institutions that we can support to enhance their authority, to educate, to monitor, to test, and to bring new regions... to enhance their authority, to educate, to monitor, to test, and to bring new regional ecological, human health, and economic development practicalities to our, to air issues, to water issues, and even to the development of new natural resources like the shale gases.
I just, I could just hear somebody at home watching our program right now saying, they're not going to be able to do that. It's important to point out, and we did earlier in the evening, I think, as it relates to a lot of these issues, most of these issues, maybe all of these issues, the environment in particular, making progress, testing results, seeing the air cleaner, it's not going to happen in a month. It's not, it might not happen in a year, it's going to happen years down the road. It's important to talk timeline so people know we're working on that.
To that end, Jim wants to jump in with something.
Go ahead.
I'd like to comment on this issue of a presumed tension between local identity and regional identity. Because I don't think it necessarily calls for one to sacrifice to the other. And in many cases, the regional opportunities are for exchanging great ideas that really serve a local community. And I'd like to mention one of the other education projects we're working on, which is called Kids and Creativity. And this was something that was started by Greg Baer and the Graeble Foundation, when he started calling people together to think about what would help to advance the inspiration of children, the creativity of children. And he started inviting formal educators, community-based organizations, higher education, and it grew to an association of 300-some people from all walks of life, and from many sectors that didn't always intersect with one another. And there was no particular effort to say, we must have a unified model of inspired learning or creativity. It became a very stimulating forum for how to exchange ideas and create partnerships. And there were many, many teachers who say, I want that idea for my school. So it really is about local pride, but the exchange of ideas has been really expansive. And that's the other initiative of our committee that's really going to take the Kids and Creativity Forum across the whole P-32 region. And we're seeing some great examples. Carnegie Mellon University has established a satellite in West Virginia, working with Marshall University and Ogilvy Institute in Wheeling. These things are happening voluntarily, they're new partnerships, and they're all about exchanging ideas. They're not about political boundaries. These are about people who care about kids and want to share the best ideas they have with one another. So I think that's the best of both worlds.
Sounds like a good plan. So jumping off what Court said, Karen, I'd like to go back to you and if we can talk about the water and the work that the committee wants to do in that area.
Well, water, like air, is one of those environmental resources that doesn't respect artificial political boundaries. We all live upstream from someone and we all live downstream from someone. And so water needs to be looked at regionally. There are other regions of Pennsylvania and other states within the Power of 32 that have regional kinds of institutions that allow for an understanding of how water use and water quality and development all affect each other, and they have ways to analyze those impacts and ways to manage them. Here in our Power of 32 region, we don't really have any kind of regional institution or mechanism for examining the benefits, the uses, the impacts on our water resources, whether it be quantity or quality, whether it be surface water or groundwater. So the goal, the water goal for Power of 32 is to examine what we might be able to do to create that kind of mechanism that would enable us to have that regional view and to understand how we might manage for the benefit of all users, all citizens, all needs for water within our region.
All right, well, thank you. Let's take a moment now, and we're almost towards the end. Let's go back to Michael for another quick look at survey results.
Okay, let's take a look at some of the results of the six areas. Once again, which would you volunteer to work on? Education. Jimmy D.'s host, happy again. Education, still the number one. Okay, the next question. We also want to know, which of these six areas do you think will most benefit from working as a region? Again, the economy. The economy is still number one. And our last question again, which of these six areas impacts you the most? Again, the economy. How about that? Okay, guess what? I'm so excited. I'm going to give you another tweet, 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 okay?
There we go.
Just hold on, let's check it out. How does the Power of 32 address keeping young people and college grads in the region? How do we avoid brain drain? Very excellent question.
Who would like to start in answering that question?
Jobs.
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 Jobs, and also quality of life. You know, you can't get over the economics. Young people graduating need and want to make a good living, but young people also put a great deal of value on the local amenities and quality of life, whether it's arts and cultural institutions, whether it's, you know, sports franchises, any number of things. So that is not to be diminished. And I think the fact that these communities in this region are blessed with a huge number of assets that they can be built on and used to attract young people, that's something that also can't be overlooked.
And let me add environmental quality to the quality of life equation. We understand from some of the new technology companies that attracting new business here and new workers here and keeping them here depends on being able to say, we've got good water, we've got clean air. Because the young person today is pretty mobile. The well-educated person will go where the jobs are but won't go to places where they're afraid their health or the health of their families is going to be jeopardized, and they want to be able to take advantage of places where the environment is in good shape.
Yeah, we have 30 seconds left. My last question, is there anybody doing this right? Has any other region of the country done this and done this successfully?
Not across this number of jurisdictions, but there are other regional visioning projects doing wonderful things. Utah's got an incredible project, Portland area is doing a great job, Greater Arizona, Greater Tucson is working on a project like this right now. So other places are coming together across these kinds of lines. Delaware did a particular project just focused entirely on education. Getting the players all to the table at the same time makes a huge difference, but also making sure that we include that fourth sector and go with what the community most needs to hear.
Well, so important now, if your comments need more than the Twitter limit of 140 characters at home, we want to remind you that our Power of 32 conversation continues on our Facebook page. It's facebook.com/WQEDPittsburgh. We've also put a link to the Power of 32 website. That's at WQED.org/P32. I am being told we are out of time. I thank our esteemed panelists, the first panel, second panel, Michael Bartley, everyone here tonight, from our studio crew. I'm Tonya Caruso. Thanks so much for joining us. Have a good night.